Patient. Shane, do you have any updates, Jerry, any updates on public safety building?
We've been meeting with the focus groups. Next up is Friday for the police and fire chiefs to meet separately with the managers working group to go over the particulars, what they're looking for, just to focus on, you know, the next, the next agenda, the next move with the building and just to keep moving forward. And, um, you know, of course it comes down to the decision at this table, but we're still moving forward with, with our task of, you know, designing a public safety building and what the needs would be.
So we're, we're still looking at the design of it?
Well, the needs, we're still looking at the needs, we're confirming the needs, the spatial needs, what the departments need, we're trying, now we're focusing in, you know, we're honing in on now what the specific needs are for police and fire. We had the general needs, now we're starting to focus on those needs.
But there's also a meeting with HPC regarding?
Right, and we did meet with, um, Lauren Copeland and, um, Dave Clemmons from the HPC, um, in this room open to the public, and they, um, had input on the building, on design, had ideas, a lot of good thoughts and concerns came out, and I think it was a productive meeting, and, uh, you know, the timing, I think the timing was right. We're at that point now where, um, moving forward, we, we do have, you know, HPC's concerns and what they think the streetscape, um, should look like.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'm having questions about, I thought at the last, one of the council meetings where H, we had that presentation by the public safety building, that all the plans were, were completed, there was three options, they were all completed. So now we're going back to the drawing board and we're changing them again?
No, we're just, we're just honing in on the specifics now, like, it, that, there's, what you saw were just, you know, generalization, space, they were specified space, but now we're, we're, we're getting to the point now where specific needs are being addressed and making sure what was on, um, the drawings are, what are needed, can it be tweaked, are they happy with it?
Have the USA Architects done any kind of measurement yet? Because I know they were saying that they just overlaid the public safety building on the parking lot, they haven't done measurements yet. Because that was my complaint before with the, with the USA Architects, that they were saying they could get all these parking spots in this little alleyway here, and they said, well, we never did measurements. So it seems like they haven't done measurements yet. Or they plan on doing measurements anytime soon?
I believe at some point they will have to, but I have not seen any specific numbers.
Okay, because I mean, to say what will fit without doing an actual?
I understand.
What the footage is, it's going to be a little?
Right, what the square, yeah, the, the dimensions are.
Right.
I don't know just the exact dimensions because we haven't exactly designed an exact building yet, but once we do, then we'll have close, um, numbers for that corner.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give a little presentation if that's okay?
On?
On, on the public safety building?
Uh, yeah.
Is everyone still awake after that, uh, closed session? Not really sure how to turn this thing on here. Hold it in. First off, I, I appreciate the new format that we have of a, of a work session. I, I think this is good informationally for everybody, and I think this will help all of us, um, know better what's, what's going on. This is a, a little slideshow that I put together of, um, just important things of where we've, um, come from with the public safety building, uh, where we're going and where we're at. Um, a lot of you know that there's of course been some, um, disagreement when it comes to the public safety building, uh, what we're going to do in the future, and, um, I think it's important that we all discuss this publicly, we do it, um, in front of, uh, the taxpayers, and you know where I stand and where everyone else stands on council. I want to first say thank you to, um, Mr. Elwell, former mayor Elwell, for some of these beginning photographs. Um, as some of you know, um, four out of the five proposals ask that this building, the museum be demolished to make way for the public safety building. And if we're going to do that, I think it's really important that we discuss the history, where this came from, um, how it was built, what we did. So if you, um, indulge me, I will go through a couple photos here. This is the meeting to hear the plans for the fire museum and the building of it. This is the actual building of the museum. Most of the people that you see standing there are volunteer firemen who actually built the building themselves. Um, a lot of people think that that building is, uh, really old and a historic property. Well, frankly, they did a really good job of a replica of, of a historic property. More pictures of a lot of the volunteers working on building the museum. Of course, you can see the Franklin Street School in the background here. Again, all volunteers, even using the fire truck to put the roof rafters in. And, uh, as you can see there, there's a, uh, sign asking for donations, which a, a lot of, um, maybe a lot of you even contributed back then, but it was certainly a barn raising, um, from, uh, the community. Of course, uh, roof rafters going in. Uh, one, I, I think they just did a beautiful job on the cedar shake roof. And of course, here's the dedication, ready, ready for the dedication, of course, the firehouse in the background, and you can even see the Franklin Street School to the right. Here is the celebration of, of the opening of the, um, ser, of the museum. You might even recognize some of the people in these photographs. And, uh, of course, some of the dignitaries in the city, you might recognize, I, I know one guy that's in this photograph that's in the front row here, who is, uh, Chief Barney Doherty. And, uh, of course, uh, gotta have a little shout out to the star and wave and all of these. For the five options that we're considering, ask that this be demolished. Um, I know that Councilwoman Sheehan has said that she will not vote for that, and I agree with that. Um, I will not vote to see this museum be torn down. Some of you know, I'm actually helping build the Harriet Tubman Museum, which is just on the same block. Um, I just won't be voting to tear down a museum while I'm building another one. This is a letter from the volunteers, the Cape May volunteers. This is asking the city, please don't tear down the museum that they helped build. This is the Mid-Atlantic Center for the Arts, was a letter to council, please do not tear down the museum. It's very valuable, not just aesthetically, but, um, most of you probably don't notice how many people actually go in there, and a lot of people go in that museum. And this is a letter to council from the Historic Preservation Commission, asking the same thing, please do not tear down that building. Moving on, beyond the museum, we have, of course, received a hundred and twenty-six page document from, uh, Hill International. Hill International is a group, um, that we paid to have estimates done, and when I say we, of course, I mean the taxpayers, to do a, uh, study on how costly our options would be. And this is that study dated August 2nd, 2019. This is, uh, building option one. We can go down to the bottom because I'm not expecting you to see all those numbers, but the final number, total construction estimate is twenty million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That includes some lead certifications when it comes to, uh, green technologies, but the bottom line number for construction cost is twenty million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Option two is a total estimate of twenty-two million, three hundred and forty-five. Option three is a total estimate of twenty-one million, seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. I bring these numbers up because today, this is the only professional, um, estimates that the city has ever received. Um, we, of course, have worked hard, and the committee should be commended for working hard to try to bring these numbers down, but, um, the fact is, these are the only professional numbers that we've ever received in regards to the costs of the building itself. I also want to go into what I see as alternatives that we could do, that could be fina, financially be done, that, um, the taxpayers can afford, and that will, of course, help our police and firemen, firefighters. At this point, I think frankly, the public safety building is a dead issue. Uh, it is very costly, it does not have support of council, and the question that we should be asking ourselves on council is, how do we move forward? How can we give, uh, our firefighters and our police officers the facilities that they need at a price that the taxpayers can afford? Many of you may not know that we had seven, um, architects bid on the project. These are some of the proposals that were sent in. This one is a rendering for full disclosure, but I have a lot, so bear with me, I'll go pretty quickly. This is a rendering for a 2019 police station estimated at four million dollars, this was by Centabrino Architects. This is, um, a little less flashy, but it gives you a lot of statistics and numbers. Um, this was from, uh, Mr. Rob Conley. This was a police station in Woodbury, uh, New Jersey, uh, let's see, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one square feet, which is larger than what we'd be looking for in our police station. The estimated construction cost was three million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. This is the new Milford Police Department. This was sixteen thousand, eighty-two square feet. The final construction cost was four million, seventeen hundred, four million, seventeen thousand dollars. This is the new Milford Fire Department. Um, they actually had Mr. Conley do two fire departments. Fire Department, uh, number one, which was seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three square feet, which is about the size of our current, uh, fire department. That was done for two million, four hundred and two thousand. Station number two, which was eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five square feet, was done for two million, one hundred and four thousand dollars. This is Woodbury Heights. Woodbury Heights, uh, was approximately eighty-five hundred square feet, final construction cost was one million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. This is from another architect who bid, um, on the RFP. This is a very nice fire department in York, Pennsylvania. This was fifteen thousand, five hundred square feet, done for four million dollars. This is in Bayhead, New Jersey. This is, uh, combined Borough Hall, Police Department, Court, Municipal Offices, and it had detached restrooms. This one was done by USA Architects, which is the, the architects that we have hired for, uh, as a city to do our public safety building. They did this project in 2017. It was a project size of seventeen thousand square feet, and the final construction cost was four point four million dollars. They also received a one point three million dollar grant from, um, funding from FEMA, which of course brought the price down significantly. Again, another picture of, you can see the, um, uh, courtroom on the right, the, um, Sally Port for the Police Department there on the left, and again, seventeen thousand square feet, four point four million dollars from the same architects that we've hired. This is Glendola, New Jersey. This is a twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight square foot building, Fire Department, done for three point six million dollars. This was in 2008, but this was by USA Architects as well. Some more photos on Glendola. Gymnasium on the top, this is Glendola as well. Just for kicks, because we're talking about the library, this was another, um, architect that submitted this as a, um, example of the work that they've done to, of course, they submitted this to the city of Cape May. This is the Sea Isle Library, um, really not comparable, but I thought this would be fun to throw in, twelve thousand square feet, five point four million dollars. This is some of the other work that they've done. There's, um, uh, examples of police departments and fire departments, both done under four million dollars, and within the square footage that Cape May would need. This is the city of Poughkeepsie, of 2007. This is obviously a very large, uh, public safety building, this is both police and fire, twenty-six thousand square feet, six point six million dollars. I will say that this was done in, in 2007, but again, it was submitted by an architect, um, to the city of Cape May as, uh, as a, an example. Fayetteville, this is, uh, 2011, twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight square feet, five point two million dollars for, I would say, a very beautiful fire department. Another example in 2011, twenty thousand square feet, three point seven million dollars. I'm being thorough, uh, because basically we've had some comments that there aren't examples of what you're talking about, trying to say that we could do this for four to five million dollars for both the police and, and fu, excuse me, and fire, but, um, there are hundreds. I won't show you every one of them, but I will show you a couple more. This is for Washington, done in 2012, twenty thousand square feet, six point three million dollars. Again, a very large, very nice fire department. Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, 2016. This is, um, nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five square feet, done, done for two point one million dollars. This is in Katy, Texas, twenty, it was done in 2018, thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-two square feet, for just under four million dollars. I'm gonna run through a couple of these so everyone doesn't get bored, but we're, this is also another example of a, just under thirteen thousand square foot fire department done for five million. Very beautiful. Um, this one was done, interestingly enough, in an area that, where it was, um, a historic, uh, district, um, and therefore, this fire station was supposed to be built to match a church that was adjacent to the property. I think they did a pretty nice job. It's twenty thousand, three hundred and thirteen square feet, done for five point eight million dollars. Um, this one was a larger one, I thought, uh, it would just be a good example to put in at twenty-five thousand square feet, very large, very modern looking building, but obviously a very nice building. Again, I'm not saying that any of these fire departments would exactly fit in Cape May, but they are examples of fire and police departments that have been built within the last couple of years. This was done in 2017, twenty-five thousand square feet for five point one million. This one, 2018, eleven thousand square feet, three point six million. Um, another one, done in 2018, fifteen thousand square feet for just under four million, eighty-five hundred square feet, three point four million. Twenty seventeen, under thir, just under thirteen thousand square feet for three point one five. I'm gonna skip through a few here, but the bottom, bottom line and the point of all this is to show, um, the citizens of Cape May, there are cities across the country that build very beautiful fire departments, very beautiful police stations for under five million dollars, and it's something that we should do here in Cape May. It's something I'm willing to bond for and vote for, um, immediately. I think we should be doing the fire department immediately. Some of you know that right now, uh, our firefighters are in temporary bunks. Um, it's something that, uh, I don't think we should delay any longer on, and I think it's something that we can do pretty quickly. Um, okay, so this is my last example, um, of course skipping through a bunch here, but, um, this one is from 2017, it's twenty thousand, five hundred square feet, done for three point eight million dollars. I want to talk about something that we, we did on the, um, some of you know, I think it was October 2nd, the, uh, committee, uh, gave a presentation to council. This was the original, um, committee, uh, proposal, um, and a, as some of you know, they were tasked with going around town and looking at publicly owned property to see, uh, other alternative locations for either a fire or police station or a public safety building, total. Uh, this was the original slide that was given to the city back under the, uh, when former mayor Gaffney was chairperson and Barney Doherty was vice-chairperson. The reason I'm showing you this is this is Elmira Street and Broad, this is the corner there. But I just want to note a difference between the last, um, presentation that we were given on October 2nd, then with this slide, which was from 2017. Based on Rob Conley Architects LLC drawings from the elevation and the assessment of the facility needs for the city of Cape May Police Department dated November 2017, the lots currently owned by the city may support a standalone police station. On this same slide, the, the pros and cons were essentially all the same, um, from the October 2nd meeting, but this one was changed to read, if New Jersey DOT lots are included, which is not what the architect said in 2017. This is a, uh, rendering of a thirteen thousand square foot police station that could be located on the corner of Broad and Elmira. That is all, um, publicly, or, excuse me, city-owned property, and that is, um, a, a thirteen thousand square foot two-story police station drawn in with, um, a lot of parking as well. It took some, a little bit of crazy math to get the, um, quadrilateral, um, lot, uh, square footage, but, uh, that is the exact lot square footage. That concludes my presentation. The point of this is to hopefully spark some conversation on council. Um, I'm hoping that we can come to some type of agreement. As you know and heard earlier, we're considering a two million dollar bond for the library. I think we can certainly, uh, stomach between a four million to five million dollars for each, the, uh, fire station and the police station. And interestingly enough, within the next couple of years, there's a ten million dollar bond that exists, but is due to be expired soon on Convention Hall. This would help replace that without raising taxes. I think it's something that taxpayers can stomach, and I think it's something that would provide excellent facilities for both our police and fire. Thank you.
I think while we're waiting to, Mayor, to rejoin the table, um, thank you, Zach. I know that in your, um, lack of acceptance to the findings of the Public Safety Committee, report to council on Oc, in October, that the burden of proof to come forward with some options was truly on you. But I also feel that no matter who has the burden, you always have to come up with facts. And I think that, um, while the slideshow gave us an entree of what was happening around the country from the early 2000s to perhaps 17 or 18, um, I do believe that the credible evidence is still lacking. It's easy to pick some pictures out and show what could be, but this is Cape May, we have specific needs, there is no study, there is no drawing, there is no schematics, there's nothing but your opposition to the public safety building and as, as what has been presented. So, um, none of those things that you showed, with the exception of maybe two, were public safety buildings, it was either a fire, a firehouse or a police station, and that is not what was tasked, uh, in the RFP, so it doesn't override what is. So I think that, um, I don't believe that a compromise is two different buildings. And I agree with you that the firemen are long overdue for something better, as well as the fire, uh, as well as the police. I, I was just, this week, shown what the bunk room looks like even after the remediation and the repairs, and it's substandard. And I think if anything would create a sense of need for us to get on with this public safety building, would be for each one of us to spend a night in that firehouse and see what they endure. Because I think that if one were to do that, I think any of this division would go away because we can do both of those and create one building.
Well, the professional that we hired from the city gave estimates between twenty-one and up to basically twenty-five million dollars. But, uh, since that, the, uh? I, I'm not sure how we proceed from that point without looking at other alternatives. And I'm offering, I, I offered a lot of buildings, I don't know if you noticed the dates, but there were dozens, frankly, I think some people back here were getting pretty bored and seeing dozens and dozens of examples from 2016 on, uh, of both police and fire stations under four million dollars.
But I think it's irresponsible for you to capitalize on that estimate that was given by Hill when we're, you're truncating the process, you refuse to allow the process to go on. We know that now we have some, what we would call recent, relevant comps that we know, and there's been some changes. So why not allow the process to go from, as it went from council, from the public safety, now it's, now it's to the community, and as they go through it, then we'll make our decision?
How, how is it in the community?
We haven't had one public state, or one town hall?
Excuse me, I believe that when you, when you listened very carefully to the October meeting, I believe the Public Safety Committee outlined that as they are going, going to council, now they're going into focus groups, small groups which can generate and yield a far more focused, as the word is, on groups and individuals, whether it's the, whether it's the fire department, the police department, HPC. I sat in on a six-hour HPC education meeting on Monday, and one of the casual conversations that I had at lunch, which was totally, you know, out of, out of the blue, was both the chairperson of HPC and the, uh, Dave Clemmons, who's also sits on HPC, saying, it's really good that we're working with the Public Safety Building Committee. And I said to him, I said, you know, now it is HPC's turn to have this dialogue with the committee, because the two years and two, two thousand hours prior to this would have been a waste of their time, they're now focusing in on this. And they both said, I think we can make this work. They will continue on Friday, I hope you'll attend.
Well, I, I, I'm just gonna react to saying that I'm capitalizing on anything.
Wrong figures.
This is wrong?
Wrong figures.
What professional figure, I have a?
We don't have, we do not have the figures on the exact design, we do not have those, you cannot?
So we paid for a hundred and twenty-six page?
It's part of the process, Zach. I understand that you do? I understand that you do things differently. But that's part of a municipal process when you're doing a large project like this.
And it's our job to react to that process. Once a committee has been working on something for two years, and we get a report that says, "This is gonna cost you $25 million", it's our job, it's our responsibility as elected officials to take that report and say, "What are the alternatives that we can discuss as a council to work together to find something that will work?" Not to hide from the facts and not to say that someone's capitalizing on the facts. It's just reacting to the facts and trying to come to a compromise that works for all the parties. This compromise isn't exactly what I'd like to do. We have a problem with our water desalinization plant. We have a lot of other multimillion dollar projects that are going to have to go forward. I'm asking for a compromise that works for the greatest good of the community, the taxpayers, and the public service people.
Mr. Mayor, may I have an opportunity to speak first?
Go ahead.
I just want to make clear to the public, some of those numbers that Hill had provided for cost estimates were, what do I say, conservatively high, or, you know? Since then, we felt that they were high. And the architects that we had was working on another public safety building in another town in New Jersey. And similar size, similar aspects. But this building came down, went out to bid, and the bids came back, you know, way lower than what was anticipated. What's that?
We can't.
Okay, okay, okay.
And the second thing, you know, the former administration before this year hired the architect to do a punch list of things based off of the RFP that we gave them. And they're not done the process yet. It's, you know, there's a few more things that they have to do to finalize the contract that we have created with them. And finally, you know.
Who, and I don't mean to interrupt, but what are you referring to that's not finished?
There's a number of duties that we hired the architects to do, and there's a few more things that we have to finish up before their contract is over. And that's all based on the RFP.
We hired them, correct?
Yes, the council did.
You said the former administration. I was confused of what you were trying to say.
No, I'm pretty sure.
Conley.
We hired them in 2018.
No, we hired them.
No, but you were just referring to Conley.
Right, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be confusing. But either way, the reason that it was so strongly discussed that we wanted, members of the committee wanted to put this building in one location with both police, fire, and OEM, was because it's, the location's historically always been. It's kind of the center square of the city. But I think more importantly, I can take a, you know, right down every street in Cape May and put it in a hat and say, "Well, I'm gonna put that police station there." Doesn't matter where, I can put that police station in this town. Nobody's gonna want the police station right next door to their property. And they can probably argue that doing so will devalue their property and their neighborhood. And that's part of the reason, I just wanted to share that why it's so important to keep it centralized and together. Very good.
I just want to make a comment that the firehouse is still gonna be centrally located, and the police station's still gonna be centrally located if we put it at Broad and Elmira. And the former committee, Jerry Gaffney, had suggested putting it at Broad and Elmira, the police station, because he felt that it couldn't fit on that entire block of it being the firehouse and the police station.
But we don't own 70% of that entire area that was looked at, at Elmira Street. Seventy percent of it is owned by the Department of, New Jersey Department of Transportation. The city of Cape May and the part where the building was proposed is where there's parking, but also bus parking for all the, you know, for all the tourists that come in the side season. And not to mention the New Jersey transit buses.
But it could fit on the property that is owned by the city.
But listen to what you're saying. It could fit.
Well, it's not gonna figure.
Same question, but that's what I, thank you for just proving my point. It's been worked on this site, and you're saying it can't fit. But yet, the public is supposed to believe that the police station is in a better position at Elmira because you said it can fit.
I'm not talking.
It's difficult.
It's not difficult, actually. There's, we're talking about a public safety building, which some of the options are almost twice the size of Convention Hall. Or dividing it in half and putting a police station there and the fire station where it currently exists. We're also obviously talking about the library. If we have a 30-some thousand square foot building directly next to the library, there will be zero parking here for anyone. And many of you probably had an issue getting in just this evening without a public safety building, without a library. And the other issue is, most people don't understand that we have a lot of police vehicles parked over in West Cape May right now at the substation. If we're going to build a public safety building, of course, we're not gonna be using the substation anymore. So all of those police vehicles that are currently parked in West Cape May would be in this area. I mean, putting the library directly next to.